Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with the Loney and Moore's Cranium, I'm Jay Carter. The acronym is ANPAC under Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 85, Class 85. What did we learn in Class 84? Well, we're still going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, right? So we're right now, we're in Chapter 6, which is about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. And what are we learning in Chapter 6? Well, we're learning about law and history. What about law and history? So over the history, the United Nations Charter, along with the League of Nations, right, going back to the League of Nations and from the League of Nations going backwards to what? The diplomatic body at Tangier, right, that was located where? In Morocco, right? So Spain had an occupation in the Kingdom of Morocco, right? Spain had an occupation and the diplomatic body had their legation where they were meeting, similar to what the United Nations does now in Manhattan, New York, right? So the United Nations headquarters, their main headquarters is located where? In New York, right, Manhattan. So in 1906, according to the Act of Asiris, the diplomatic body, i.e. the United Nations headquarters, was located in Tangier, right, 1906, right? So all of the colonial states and all other states such as the Moors states around planet Earth, were all still trying to come together as an organized jewel society to stop what? The hundreds of years of wars, right? So you always have to remember, Moors, that at this time in 1906, when they created the diplomatic body, the Sultan had summoned all of the Christian powers to the table, right? So the Sultan did that along with who? The Moors government, right? So the Sultan realized the empire was slipping, he started reigning in the order in order to get some type of sovereignty and independence back into the empire in order to reign in the order of what? Integrity of domains and then last but not least, economic liberty without any inequality. This is what the Sultan was bringing in. But the Sultan knew he needed some help, so what did he do? He resurrected the Moors. He knew the Moors had been subjugated, the Moors had been naturalized under connotative linguistic names such as Americans. He knew the Moors wasn't Americans. He knew the Moors wasn't French. He knew the Moors wasn't Spaniards. He knew the Moors wasn't Portuguese. He knew the Moors wasn't British. He knew the Moors wasn't Irish. He knew the Moors wasn't German. He knew the Moors wasn't Russian. He knew that the Moors were Moroccans. Now, under the name of whatever naturalized status they're in, right? But getting back to what Jermaine, to the point of Class 84. You must understand, Moors, that the diplomatic body at Tangier in 1906 was then transferred over to the League of Nations in 1920. Then the League of Nations and its principles, right, its mandates, its reforms, was transferred over to the United Nations Charter of 1945. And ever since 1945, leading up to today's date, right now, we're in what? January 2023, that charter is now still in existence. And the charter is what? It's a convention, it's arrangement put together by the signatory powers that were overseeing the Moroccan empire, right? Because like I told the Moors, just because the Sultan stepped down in 1956 and so did France, France stepped down in 1956, they left the Moors empire void of a central government. So right now, the Charter has been acting like the Sultan, right? The Sultan has taken, I mean, the Charter has taken on the obligations of what the Moors treaties were supposed to do, right? So the Security Council is similar to like the Sultan, right? It's acting like a monarchy. Then you got the General Assembly that almost acts like the Magen, right? This is how they set up their government, right? So the Moors must understand, law and history goes together. So in the absence of the Moors, since the Moors were sleeping and we act, yes, we consented to allow them to come in as trustees and managers to oversee the Moors empire. What has happened? They've become a belligerent, right? They have taken over the pen like the precious, right, Lord of the Rings? And now all the states on planet Earth are in fight. Why? It's because the Moors are not there to oversee the reforms. What type of reforms? Well, you look at the Treaty Affairs of 1912, it tells you what the reforms are in Article 1. So what are the reforms of Article 1 of the Treaty Affairs? Says administrative, right? Judicial, educational, right? Economic, financial, and military reforms. That was the job that the Moors were supposed to be doing with their pen. We were supposed to be overseeing fallen humanity. We were supposed to uplift all states to bring back humanity, right? This is why Nubra Ali told us it was our job to uplift fallen humanity across planet Earth, right? So if we start learning in Class 84, the Pacific Settlement Agreement, right, is about what? What do we learn in Class 84? Okay. So here I have on the board. The Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 6, is about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. And what is it basically about? It's about the prior, prior, prior consent to recognize the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice, the ICJ, right? That's what it's mainly about. However, there are steps that are taken before you get to a court, right? So in the Chapter 6, we're learning that it's all about mediation, then arbitration, and then judicial settlement, i.e. adjudication, right? This is what we're learning, Moors. In order to become competent Moors, we must understand the steps of maintaining diplomacy first, right? Maintaining diplomacy was political interest, right? And last but not least, judicial settlement, right? That's what we're learning. This is what the Moors have to learn, right? We have to be competent Moors. We have to show the whole world that we understand the step by step due process of law, right? That's very important, okay? All right, so let's go ahead and get into it. As you know, ANPAC always opens up with the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, right? We'll talk a little bit more about the Constitution today in terms of its importance as it relates to the International Court of Justice, right? As it relates to the Security Council, okay? So we'll talk about the Constitution a little bit more, but as you know, in your Constitution, the Constitution outlines your dominion, right? Your territory, your frontier, right? Your Udi Posiditis jurisdiction, which is your latitude, longitude, that sets forth the geographical location of your state, right? And then your state turns around and recognizes you. So the sovereigns get together and they transfer their sovereignty into the proper written instrument, commonly known as a Constitution, because the Constitution constitutes the bylaws for the people, right? That's why it says, "We, the people," all the people, "have put their sovereignty into a proper written instrument." They've allowed the Constitution now to govern affairs of all the people of that particular jurisdiction, right? That's what the Constitution is all about. Obviously, it has its three branches of government, and that's how you start to enact your organized jewel society, okay? All right, let's continue. Let's go ahead and get into Class 85. So as the Moors know, in Class 84, we were reading over Chapter 6 about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. We already read all of this particular chapter, but we need to go back and recap and spend a little bit more time on this particular chapter, because this chapter is very important. It's very important to Moors, it's very important to all states on planet Earth. Why is that? It's because the Pacific Settlement disputes is to try to maintain peace and security on planet Earth. It's to try to avoid the scourge of war, right? So all states on planet Earth have already agreed, right? Through consent by acceding to the Charter or they were agreed by acquiescence because they referred themselves as having a state. So if you refer to having a state, you automatically still come under the jurisdiction of the Charter's provisions, right? Now, the Moors still need to look up when referred to the Pacific Settlement of Disputes of the United Nations has set forth a resolution of 1949. We'll talk about that a little bit today. But let's do a recap and then move forward about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, okay? So in Class 84, we had read over Article 33. So if I can have good brother Marcus go ahead and read this section one one more time.
Okay. Chapter 6, Pacific Settlement of Disputes, Article 33. Number one, the parties to any dispute, the continuance of which is likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security shall, first of all, seek a solution by negotiation, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement, resort to regional agencies or arrangements or other peaceful means of their own choice. Number two, the Security Council shall, when it deems necessary, call upon a party to settle their dispute by such means.
Okay, let's go ahead and skip over now to Article 36. Okay, good brother?
Article 36, number one. The Security Council may, at any stage of a dispute of the nature referred to in Article 33 or of a situation of like nature, recommend appropriate procedures or methods of adjustment. Number two, the Security Council should take into consideration any procedures for the settlement of dispute which have already been adopted by the parties. Number three, in making recommendations under this article, the Security Council should also take into consideration the legal disputes should as general rule be referred by the parties to the International Court of Justice, ICJ, in accordance with the provisions of the Statute of the Court.
All right, so what does this mean as we start to summarize? Well, first of all, Moors, the Moors have to learn how to maintain Article 33. These are instructions. But where did these instructions come from? These instructions came from Moroccan law, right? If you go back and look at the history as we've been building up through the diplomatic body of Tangier, then the League of Nations, and now the United Nations, this is all Moroccan law, right? Because France was tasked with inauguration to have an office to enact Moroccan law, right? Ever since 1912, so between 1912 and 1956, they were always enacting Moroccan legislation, right? Because of France. And the United States of America was also a signatory power to the Moroccan treaties. So everything that the United States of America does on an international level, they're enacting Moroccan treaties, or should I say, enacting Moroccan legislation, because the United States of America is the last signatory power whose name is on our Moroccan treaties. And the International Court of Justice told the United States of America in 1952 that they could still hold on to a limited, limited privilege jurisdiction of maintaining civil and criminal jurisdiction and legislation in Morocco, right? So because of that, the United States of America now sits on the Permanent Security Council along with France, right, Great Britain, Russia, right, and China. But all these particular signatory powers all are aware of Moroccan law. They all know. Now, they'll act like they have amnesia, right? They'll act like they have cognitive dissonance. But the reason why they're getting away with that is because the Moors have suffered from acquiescence. But once we make a proper claim, we'll start to enforce the United Nations so-called Permanent Security Council members to enact certain reforms that now enforces Moroccan law the way it was meant to be, right? So right now, the Permanent Security Council members are enforcing Moroccan law in a negative way, right? They're taking advantage of it with their belligerence, right? So we'll talk about that some more today. So as the Moors get into Article 33. When we start to deal with the United States of America and the United States International Organization, and there's several constituent charter states, right? We have to seek negotiations. Here's a solution, right? Here's a solution. Due process of law. When you're looking for what's called, commonly known as a nature of relief, right? When you're seeking a nature of relief, how do you relieve this particular problem? Okay, here's a solution. By negotiations, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, and judicial settlement, right? Now, everybody knows about Consular Court, but here's where Moors have to now back up a little bit. We have to understand, how do we utilize our Minister of Foreign Affairs, i.e. our Hajj, right? The Hajj is the Minister of Foreign Affairs in the Moors state. How do you utilize your Mufti, which is the Consul General, right? So your Hajj deals with mediation, right? Which is the Minister of Foreign Affairs to try to now negotiate with the other state that you potentially have a dispute with, right? If those conversations fail, who's up next? That should be the Consul General, i.e. the Mufti, right? Now, the Mufti is dealing with more of a mediation, conciliation, and moving closer into arbitration. Because that's what attorneys do, right? Attorneys deal with arbitration, right? But they're always seeking a settlement before they ever take it to court. And even when they get to court, any one of the parties at any time can still seek what? A settlement, right? A plea bargain even before a judgment comes out, right? So arbitration is a very long process that any one of the parties can say, okay, let's get back to mediation. We don't technically want to go to court, right? But that's where your Consul General comes in to deal with that. So we're building up. And then last but not least, if all the political affairs, the correspondence, right? Ends, right? Your diplomatic relations ends, your consul relations ends, everything has failed. Last but not least, judicial settlement must prevail. Because the matter has to be what? Settled, right? See right here, the word settlement, it has to be settled so both parties can move on. Because if two parties can't move on, it continues to disrupt planet Earth. Because when two states have a contentious dispute, it affects the whole planet, right? Especially now with the internet, all the states have come back together. It's almost like the Pangaea has come back together. All the lands have come back together. The lands are not technically separated by the Atlantic Ocean anymore. The lands have come back together, boys, because of the internet. Even though we know we're separated by oceans, right, by the seven seas, but the internet has created one landmass again. So therefore, any problem between two neighboring states, whether those neighboring states butt up to each other or those neighboring states are miles and miles away from each other, they still create disruption on planet Earth, right? So this is all about settling. At the end of the day, you've got to settle. You cannot allow disputes to fester. It disrupts the whole work, right? Okay, all right. So with that being said, let's do a little bit deeper dive, okay? So in Class 84, we started going over the United Nations Security Council. Visit their website of the United Nations, right? So on the Pacific Settlement of Disputes, Chapter 6 of the UN Charter, it starts to talk a little bit more about what Moors can go and do some research to look into the Pacific Settlement, this particular page, right? That Article 33, we went through this already. We talked about the repertory, right? The repertory, this word, repertory, is about case study, right? You can go back and look at a lot of years, starting in 1946 to 1951. How did the Security Council deal with a particular dispute between these years, right? You can go back and look at the case study, okay? To see how they dealt with that contentious dispute before it got to the International Court of Justice. Was it settled during mediation and arbitration? Or did it ultimately end up in the ICJ between those two states, right? So what the Moors should take away from this immediately is not only do you perform your studies, but you have to understand that not only if we have a dispute with the United States of America, the United States and one of their several constituent charter states, not only can we seek mediation and deal with them directly, but we can also go and petition the United Nations. And they're tasked with the responsibility of sending someone as a third party to help to be a mediator, right? We'll learn more about that in the future, all right? Okay, so at the top of this, Moors, as you can see, some of their tabs, right? It says home, right? So I'm on that line right there. It's about the Council, right? So we learned in the League of Nations, it talks about the Council and it talks about the Assembly, right? So the Council is the Security Council and then the Assembly is the General Assembly. We learned a little bit about that in the League of Nations, right? So you've got practices, procedures, and working methods. This is what the Moors have to learn on how to deal with these particular disputes, right? This is the stage we're at right now. When you're looking at the triple principle, what stage are the Moors at? Once they have now ratified the policy promulgated the Constitution, right? They've acceded to certain treaties. What's box number two? Integrity of domains, right? So how do you maintain your integrity of domain? Well, you have to learn what? Practices, procedures, and working methods, i.e. through your legislation enforcing contracts. And what's contracts? Legislation, constitutions, treaties, international law, and their resolutions, right? These are all contracts on how two parties try to settle disputes, okay? All right, but check this out. You've got the repertoire of Security Council practice, right? And look at the end, constitutional issues. So this is one of the things that the Moors were lacking. We did not have constitutions. So how could we enforce international law without a constitution? You see how the Security Council and the Constitution are all in the same variable, right? It's the understanding that these two things go together. Why is that? Because the Constitution recognizes the nationals. The Constitution recognizes the states. That's why the Constitution is important. That's why I say it's paramount. What does paramount mean? It means first, it's primary. That's the first thing you have to do in sovereignty and independence, right? So the Security Council is responsible for going back and reading your Constitution, right? Because the Constitution oftentimes deals with what? Territorial disputes. Oftentimes, when two states are fighting, they're fighting over what? Territory. That's most of their problems, territorial dispute. And someone trying to control the narrative of a treaty dispute, someone trying to control the narrative of trade, someone controlling the narrative of war, but it's always about territory and jurisdiction, right? So we started talking about the Pacific Settlement dispute. You have to know the law and history, Moors. So in 1899, the nations got together in 1899 because they were trying to stop the scourge of war, right? Because before the League of Nations, before the diplomatic body of Tangier, before the United Nations, war was acceptable. That's how they settled disputes. They said, "I don't like what you're doing, I'm just gonna go to war," right? This is what they did. But now they're trying to stop the scourge of war because they know it messes up trade on planet Earth. It messes up the flow of money. The cash flow stops when war starts, right? Now, the bankers make a lot of money from selling ammunition. But the other trade actually stops, right? You can't grow crops when you got a war going on, et cetera, right? Okay, so in 1899, Moors need to look this up. 1899 Convention on the Pacific Settlement of International Disputes, right? So it has several articles. What was 1899 all about? Let's go ahead and read the preamble for 1899. So as you can see, Moors, you've got a lot of signatory powers, okay? We won't read the signatory powers out loud. The Moors need to go back and Google this particular document. That way, you can see what this was all about, okay? All right, good brother Marcus, let's go ahead and read the preamble as it relates to Pacific Settlement.
Animated by a strong desire to work for the maintenance of general peace, resolved to promote by their best efforts the friendly settlement of international disputes, recognizing the solidarity uniting the members of the Society of Civilized Nations, desirous of extending the empire of law and the strengthening and appreciation of international justice. Devinc that the permanent institution of the tribunal of arbitration accessible to all in the midst of the independent powers will contribute effectively to this result. Having regard to the advantages attending the general and regular organization of the procedure of arbitration, sharing the opinion of the august interior of the International Peace Conference that it is expedient to record in an international agreement the principles of equity and the right of which are based the security of states and the welfare of people. Seeing desirous of concluding a convention to this effect, have appointed as their potentialaries to wit.
All right, thank you, good brother. So you see, the permanent court of arbitration facing documents, right? Who after having communicated their full powers? How do you have full powers? The only way to have full powers, you have to have what? The emanating document of your Constitution. And then your Constitution sets up the three branches of government and through the three branches of government, the government officials now issue what? Governmental credentials. That's the emanating document that says you're the competent authority of that state to represent the state as the Minister of Foreign Affairs, right? Minister of Plenary Contenturary, et cetera. You're the competent authority with state ID, right? Based upon your diplomatic powers, right? So you have full powers and someone's confirming this, right? They're checking the box and see if you checked the box, right? Or else you can't show up, you can't be heard. So read again. Who after having communicated their full powers, found in good and due form, have agreed on the following provisions? So all the signatory powers that was up above that we didn't read, right? You go back and read it yourself, have agreed to provisions on how to settle disputes. What about disputes? Well, they're recognizing how to settle it. It's through mediation, right? Then arbitration, then judicial settlement, right? So the Moors can go back and take a look at this. We'll go ahead and read Title 1, the Maintenance of General Peace, just this first title.
Article 1, with the view of obviating as far as possible recourse to force in the relations between states, the signatory powers agree to use their best efforts to ensure the Pacific Settlement of international differences.
All right, so this is all about, like I said, Moors, this is about mediation, then arbitration, then judicial settlement, right? So the Moors want to go back and read over this. This is a good read to see the law and history, right? So we're building up. So that is where the Pacific Settlement, when the states started to first get settled, is 1899, okay? And then in 1907, it was revised, okay? 1907 Convention for the Pacific Settlement of International Disputes, okay? And after that, 1907, so if this happened in 1907, what happened in 1906? The Act of Asiris. You see, so once the Act of Asiris was fully enacted and all the states had to go back and ratify the policy promulgated to make it part of their internal law, right, of the state, they immediately started to put in reforms to do what? Dishonored it, right? How to settle these disputes. Why? Because the Sultan had summoned all the signatory powers to the table, saying, "We have to stop this belligerence of wars." This is what the Sultan was bringing in, right? So we all know in the Act of Asiris, the first chapter of the Act of Asiris is controlling the police and controlling the military. Then Chapter 2 was about what? Controlling arms, is the repression of arms. So you see, the Sultan would immediately into trying to now control the military reforms, right? 1906. So in 1907, what happens? The states come back together again, say, "Yeah, man, we gotta abide by this new Moroccan law." You see? All right, so in 1907, they revised the Pacific Settlement again according to the Act of Asiris, right? They're all trying to come together and promote peace. So in 1949, okay? So this is a revised general act for the Pacific Settlement of International Disputes, adopted by the General Assembly at its 199th plenary meeting on 28 April 1949, right? So that means that's what? Four years after the United Nations was ratified, right? The policy promulgated by the states, right? So now they revised this settlement. And now they put that same provisions where? Into the Charter. Because now we're still talking about the Pacific Settlement. Now you go back to the Charter. And the Charter talks about the Pacific Settlement of Disputes. So that's just a quick little bit of history on it, okay? So let's do a little bit more research. Okay, let's just do a quick Wikipedia search about the Pacific Settlement. It's about the Hague Convention, okay? So Moors can look this up on Wikipedia, as you can see it. Got some images there. Okay, good brother, let's go ahead and read about the Hague Convention, 1899 and 1907.
The Hague Conventions of 1899 and 1907 are a series of international treaties and declarations negotiated at two international peace conferences at the Hague in the Netherlands, along with the Geneva Conventions. The Hague Conventions were among the first formal statements of the laws of war and war crimes in the body of secular international law. A third conference was planned for 1914 and later rescheduled for 1915, but it did not take place because of the start of World War II, or excuse me, World War I.
Mm-hmm. So as you can see, Moors, the Hague Convention. So where is the Hague? That's the Netherlands. Where's located the Netherlands at this time? The International Court of Justice, right? Where all arbitrations are taken, right? Judicial settlement. That's been the main hub where you settle all your disputes, at the Hague, the Netherlands. That's where the ICJ is, right? The peace pact, right? So this is about the Hague Convention of 1899 and 1907 about the Pacific Settlement. This is law and history. Here's what Moors have to understand. The Hague Convention of 1899 and 1907 are a series of international treaties and declarations negotiated at two international peace conferences at the Hague in the Netherlands, along with the Geneva Conventions, right? Geneva Convention about war, right? All people who've been in the military know all about the Geneva Convention. Along with the Geneva Convention, the Hague Conventions were among the first formal statements of the laws of war and war crimes in the body of secular international law. A third conference was planned for 1914 and later rescheduled for 1915, but it did not take place because of the start of World, World, World War I, right? So what happened in 1912, right? So in 1912, what happened? The Sultan signs the treaty, Treaty Affairs 1912, right? And because of the Treaty Affairs 1912, France ended up with the precious, right? Excalibur. And the Sultan told France, "Yeah, go and enforce all the reforms in the empire of Morocco, i.e. the Moors empire." France went out like the sheriff, right? His new sheriff in town. So France, in 1912, signs the treaty. Immediately in 1913, France starts to notify all the signatory powers as a new sheriff in town who's got the pen through an inauguration. He has a legitimate office, France has a legitimate office, to oversee the seat of the Sultan and oversee the Magen of the Moors. They had a duality power, that's how much power France had. They was acting like Moors and the Sultan. That's a lot of power, right? So what happens after that? World War I. Why? World War One, why? Because the signatory powers did not want military reforms. They didn't wanna give up their ships, cause Great Britain at that time had the largest navy. So all the, uh, states such as Germany, Germany is in the process of building their infrastructure up of their military arms, they're trying to get their ships together. France is saying, hey, we gotta stop all this belligerence. And oh, by the way, you owe taxes, yeah, right? Next you know, World War One starts because France is enforcing what, the treaty, right? Gotta know the history Morse, that's why this is important, because states are trying to agree not to go to war. They got a difference of opinion about a treaty, they got a difference of opinion about jurisdiction, they got a difference of opinion about territory, they got a difference of opinion about who controls the military. They're supposed to bring that in, have a mediator deal with it, then arbitration, then settle it with a judge, right? But there should be no call to arms. That's Article twenty-four, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, says what? When there's a dispute, there must be a call to what, a friendly application. And until that application has been rejected, there should be no call to arms. That's what Article twenty-four, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship talks about. Trying to end the scourge of war, right, okay? So that's a little bit of law and history, okay? Now let's go back to the Charter. So keep in mind Morse, the United Nations Security Council along with the General Assembly oversees the Pacific settlement, right? To make sure the states come together and try to negotiate first, okay? And they're also utilizing constitutional issues. Why is the Constitution important? Cause oftentimes it outlines your obligations to international law, or at the very least, your territorial dispute. This Constitution should talk about your Udi Posse de Jus Juris, right? Okay. Now according to the Charter. Now I'm building the Moors up, keep that in mind, I'm gonna build you up Morse. We went over that eighteen ninety-nine, nineteen oh seven, right, Pacific settlement for a reason, right, in the Hague. Now we're getting back to the Charter. The Charter has set forth obligations in order to settle disputes, who's ultimately responsible? The Security Council is ultimately responsible for trying to manage the dispute before you even go to the International Court of Justice, right? That's their main objective, right? So the Security Council is responsible for what? Diplomatic affairs, they're responsible for sanctions on any states, and they're responsible for military reforms. They can send in the United Nations peacekeepers. That's bringing all the states together and their military to now confront a belligerent state, right? Security Council has a lot of power, right? But the reality is this Morse, who's the responsibility ultimately fall on to deal with security of planet Earth? Okay, let's talk about that. This right here is the Act of Al-Dusers of nineteen oh six. You got French over here, English over here, right? Now pay attention Morse, be patient with me. The Sultan is trying to reign in the order, right, in nineteen oh six. Things have gotten out of control, the Sultan is even losing his power to pin. He's taking on loans from Great Britain and Spain, and he knows just a matter of time, even he's gonna lose his power. So what does he do? He resurrects the Moors. Cause he knows only the Moors can deal with any belligerent state on planet Earth. The Moors are responsible for enacting the original laws on planet Earth, the Mohammedan laws, the Mohammedan nation, right? The Moors, the Moroccans, right? We built all the Habu properties around planet Earth. We harmonize and put together laws, right? Then we got conquered, right, removed from our chairs, for listeners. So the Sultan comes in in nineteen oh six and says, okay, I'm gonna reign in the order of all the signatory powers, that's including United States of America, right? You know the eleven signatory powers, right, i.e. the European powers, right? What's the first thing that the Sultan wants to do? Chapter one says, a declaration relative to the organization of the police. Well, what's the police also? That's your military, right? So your police is your military forms, cause that's all the police is, is a local military, that's all they are, right? To deal with the civilians, the domestic problems. And then your so-called armed forces deal with what? External problems, right? So you got what, domestic problems and you got foreign problems, right? So you got your military for foreign and you got what, your police for domestic? But it's really both militaries, right, police, they're policing the world. So let's read Article one, we're gonna read Article one for a reason, matter of fact, we'll read all twelve of these articles, okay? What are we doing right now? We're using correlations. Here's what I need the Morse to understand, let's get a proper concept and context. The United Nations Charter acts as the police of the planet, the Security Council is the police. They control the military forms. That must be the first concept, that's the Security Council, they're responsible for what? Security, well, who's security? The police. Yes or no? Security guard, right? They control diplomacy, sanctions, and the military. They're the police, okay? So the first thing the sanction, I mean, the first thing the Sultan puts into our Moroccan treaty is to control the police. So the Moors have obligation to control the police, i.e. the military of planet Earth. And the Sultan is bringing the Moors back in to do the job because the Sultan couldn't do it by himself, okay? Okay, so Article one, good brother.
Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provisions should be made. Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign, sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the madzen from Moorish Mohammedans commanded by the Moors.
Cades.
Cades and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
Okay, so your first two article Morse, pay attention. Have patience with me, we're gonna look at these correlations. What is the objective of what we're reading? It's always been the Moors' responsibility to govern the diplomatic body of Tangier. It was always the Moors' obligation to oversee the League of Nations. And it's the Moors' current obligation to oversee the diplomatic body commonly known as United Nations. United Nations Security Council is the police. They're the security of the world. They control the arms of the world. United Nations Security Council, the five so-called permanent council members can summon all the militaries of the world to go in and deal with one state. So that means they control the police, they control the military, but who was supposed to oversee the diplomatic body? Moors. Now read, so in Article one, listen Morse. Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measure necessary to organize the police declares that the following provision should be made, right? So the Sultan's summoning, he's organizing, he understands how to deal with the police. Because the Sultan is the chief of police, he's the commander in chief of the police. Working side by side with the Moors, so you, you got what, a monarchy and then you got a parliament, right? So you got the monarchy, the Sultan, and then the parliament's who, the Magen, which is the Moors government, right? Working side by side, okay? And the Sultan at this time has the veto power, okay? So let's read it again, the conference summoned, so it was a conference, i.e. a convention, right? It's set up what, an arrangement, right? That's Article one twenty-three of the Act of Al-Dusers. Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measure necessary to organize the police declares, right? That's declarations, United Nations deal with declarations. Declares that the following provisions should be made, so he's making legislation. Article two, listen, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Magen, who's the Magen? The Moors, from the Moorish Mohammedans, okay? So the Moors government is doing what? It's recruiting who? Moorish Moors, so the Moors government is recruiting Moors, okay? And commanded by the Moorish kings, right? So that's the Moorish leaders, okay? So who are the Moorish Mohammedans? Who's the Moorish kings? Okay, France will tell you the truth, what's the nationality? Listen, here's what France calls them. Who are the Moorish Mohammedans? Okay, look over here in French, Muslims are what? Moroccans. Okay, who are the Moorish kings? France says the kings are Moroccans, you see? The Moors are Moroccans, they're not Moorish Americans, they're Moroccans, period. That's the nationality. Okay, that must be understood, let's pause right here, okay? Based upon the Charter of United Nations, what is the Charter of United Nations? It's a contract. That several states around planet Earth have pledged what? Their allegiance to it, to abide by the terms and conditions of that contract. What are treaties? Contracts, what are conventions? Contracts, any arrangements put together between two parties and they both agree to it, is a contract, right? We're talking contract law. The treaty is a contract, but what about a contract? Everybody must understand what a contract is, let's talk about it. Okay, here are the four elements to a contract. This is what I learned in mergers and acquisitions, okay? Four, four elements to a contract, right? Number one, who are the parties of the contract? Number two, who are the dominant and subordinate parties of that contract? Number three, what are the terms and conditions of the contract? And number four, where and how do you enforce the contract, right? So let's go back to number three, what are the terms and conditions of a contract, right? What does terms mean? What is term? Terms is, what are the words? How do you define the words? Right? Because you may use the word black. Some people refer to the word black as an identity, where Moors say black is what, a connotative linguistic. So the two persons in that contract have to define the word black, the word black is in that contract, the two parties need to define what that word black means, that's the terms, you gotta define what's black. Cause that sets up what? The conditions of that contract, cause words turn into sentences. Sentences turn into paragraphs and paragraphs turn into contracts, and if you don't know what the words mean, then you can't enforce the contract, cause now you got a misunderstanding, miscommunication. This is when attorneys come in and they play the word game that they call linguistics, right, legalese. Legalese man, you didn't read the contract and you didn't go and say, what's this word mean? What does repertoire mean, right? People just pronounce words, they don't know what they mean, so in a contract, you must understand the terms. What is the terms? The terms and definitions of words, okay, let's make it germane to this contract. If Moors say they, yeah, we're Moorish, we're the Mohammedans, okay? Then according to the contract, Moors are Moroccans. But if you turn around and say, you're Moorish American, guess what you just said? You don't fit into the four elements of the contract. Cause you just said under number one, who are the parties? Well, you say you're Moorish American, well, that's not what the party says, party says Moroccans. So right in there, you can't enforce the contract because the parties must be known. Number two, who is dominant and who is subordinate in the contract? Well, we're learning that immediately, look, Article one, who's dominant? Okay, we're already learning who's dominant, that's the Sultan and who else? The Moors. Article one and two, that's who's dominant, right? But what type of Moors is the question? Moroccans. The Muslim men, the Muslim men's are Moroccans. The Moorish kings are Moroccans, the Moroccan kings, the Moorish kings. Because now we're understanding step number three. What are their terms and condition? Who's the terms? Moroccans, that's the term Moors should be using, if they're not using that term, you can't enforce the contract. This is a contract law class, ADPAC study session about contract law. We're understanding terms that set up conditions that set up law and history. If you don't know your history, you can't enforce the law. Okay, now what we also wanna learn is about what? Step number four, where and how do you enforce the contract? Okay, that's a part of the what, Pacific settlement disputes. Right, how do you settle dispute? Well, first of all, the Act of Al-Dusers and the Treaty of Madrid, right? And the Treaty of Peace and Friendship talks about counsel court. But if counsel court fails, right? The United States of America is still not adhering to our counsel court order, what do we take up next? Well, we go read the next contract. What's the next contract? Right here, it is what, the Charter of United Nations. Chapter six talks about the Pacific settlement disputes. But if you can't check these boxes, you'll never get to the ICJ. If you can't check these boxes, you'll never be, you'll never ever be able to enforce counsel court. Cause who can enforce counsel court? Only Moroccans, okay? Now that I'm thinking about that, I wanna show the Moors something, just be patient with me Morse, just a second. Okay Morse, let, let's, let's take a moment and examine what Barack H. Obama was trying to tell the Moors in two thousand nine when he did his speech in Cairo, Egypt, right? So Obama talked about what? The Treaty of Tripoli of seventeen ninety-six, and he went directly to Article eleven, right? So let's go down to Article eleven, right? Which this treaty first of all, about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship between the United States and the Bay and subjects a tripoli of barbarie, seventeen ninety-six. Between Moors and the United States of America, right? That's what you gotta understand, let's go down to Article eleven. This is what Obama was trying to point out to the Moors, he's trying to get the Moors an understanding of how to enforce our treaty rights. Obama kept hearing the Moors talking about enforce the Constitution, and Obama was like, ugh. No Morse, enforce your treaties and international law and not the Constitution of United States of America, right? Obama heard the Moors saying, we're Moorish Americans, and Obama was like, ugh. No, you're not, you're Moroccans, let me prove it to you what Obama was trying to tell the Moors in two thousand nine. Okay, good brother, can you read Article eleven for me, of the Treaty of Tripoli of seventeen ninety-six?
As the government of the United States of America is not in any sense founded on Christian religion as it is in itself, no character of immitity against the laws, religion or tranquility of Muslim men and as the said states never entered into any war or act of hostility against any Mohammedan nation. It is declared by the, by the parties that the pretext arising from religious opinions shall ever produce an interruption of the harmony existing between the two countries.
Alright, so what was Obama trying to tell the world? And definitely trying to tell the Moors who at the time were giving themselves a false legal personality of Moorish America? Here's what Obama was trying to tell the Moors. Right here, the United States of America, right? Cannot be hostile, immunity, right, immunity, cannot be hostile against the laws. Right, against the laws, religion or tranquility, the peace of Muslim men, right? And of the said states. Never entered into any war or act of hostility towards, against any Mohammedan nation, right? So Obama's pointing out about this Mohammedan nation, and he's pointing out about Muslim men. Muslim men and the Mohammedan nation, right? Can't be any hostility against the laws of Mohammedan nation. Can't be any hostility against the laws of the Muslim men. Okay, let's, let's go back to your Act of Al-Dusers. This is what Obama was trying to tell the Moors who kept calling themselves Moorish Americans. He says, okay, once the Moors go back and start reading their treaties instead of the Constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine or of the Constitution of the United States International Organization of eighteen seventy-one, when the Moors stopped doing that and the Moors stopped calling themselves Moorish Americans, is because they went back and read the treaties. And what is the Treaty of the Act of Al-Dusers say in Article two? The police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan? It should be recruited by the Magen from the Moorish Mohammedans? So who are the Moorish Mohammedans that Obama was trying to point out? Oh, okay, Moroccans. This is what Obama was trying to point out in two thousand nine to the Moors. Because Obama understands what? He understands the four elements to a contract. These are fundamentals that Moors have failed to understand regarding contract law. What are the four elements to a contract? We gotta understand this Morse, this is ADPAC study session. Number one, who are the parties to the contract? Number two, who are the dominant and subordinate parties in the contract? Number three, what are the terms and conditions of the contract? And number four, where and how do you enforce the contract? Talking jurisdictions? And the Moors have failed at all four of these elements. We've been failing for over a hundred years, if not longer. Cause we couldn't even get past box number one. Moors kept saying, we appropriate persona suit jurors, no we wasn't. We were just absolute frauds, cause we were trying to enforce treaties and constitutional principles under inam de guerre, a misnomer. under a non-degire, a misnomer legal personality called Moors American. There's no Moors Americans in the treaties. There's Moroccans. No, we draw a line, said, we're descendants of Moroccans. And the Moors turn around and call themselves Moors Americans. That's the truth. We delayed our own justice because we don't understand contract law. I specialize in contract law. What do you think judges do for a living? They read contracts. How do they read it? With the four elements. How else do they read it? They read it like it's Braille. What do I mean when I say they read it like it's Braille? They read it in a strict sense of the law. They don't worry about the politics, all they worry about is the contract. What does the contract say? Judges look at it and they apply the four principles, they say, okay. The judge said, okay, who are the parties of the contract? Judges say, okay, who is dominant and who's subordinate in that contract?
What does that mean?
Sub, subordinate, dominant and subordinate, what does that mean? Good question, good brother. Okay, so who's dominant in the contract is typically the person who wrote it. Whoever penned that contract, okay, let's use your, let's say your leasing apartment, right? At the top of that contract typically gonna tell you automatically who's superior. It's gonna say that leasing property management company, right? That apartment home, you'll see that right at the top. But even if you don't see that, you get right into what? Paragraph one and say, uh, this leasing property management now known as what? Landlord, right? Lessor, something like that. Right, and it'll say, Kendrick Johnson, hereon known as what? Tenant or leasing, right? Immediately tells you who's superior in the contract and say, the superior's name first, then the subordinate names second. Who's dominant? Who's subordinate in the contract is set up immediately, soon as you start reading. Right, okay, so we're looking at this as a contract, Moors. I'm gonna take my time, I'm gonna get the Moors through this contract law class that we're in. Now that we're reading over the charter, the charter of the contract. So immediately, this is about the Act of Al-Dusar of nineteen oh six. The Sultan has summoned, so what does that tell you immediately? Who's dominant in the contract? The Sultan. Then the Sultan turns around and tells you who is he working with in order to enforce this contract? He immediately tells you who? The Moors, right? The Moors are dominant in the contract, so it's the Moors. The Moors and the Sultan are dominant in the contract. Who's subordinate in the contract? The signatory powers, the Christian powers, right? So you must know your name and your obligations, okay? Now the Moors gotta understand, okay, what are the conditions? What did the conditions set up in the Act of Al-Dusar, right? Cause we're looking at correlations right now. We're looking at the United Nations Charter nineteen forty-five and the Act of Al-Dusar, we're bringing it together. How does a contract from nineteen forty-five, how is it relevant in the year twenty twenty-three? How do we enforce our treaties? How do we enforce the charter? How do we enforce, i.e. the terms and conditions of contracts? We need to identify who we are first, the parties. Second, we identify what? Who is dominant and subordinate in that contract? Who's dominant in the Charter of the United Nations right now? The five Security Council members. Who's subordinate? All the other member states and non-member states according to that particular contract. Listen to me, Moors. The Charter says the five Security Council members, so-called permanent Security Council members are dominant and everybody else is subordinate. Why is that? Because the five Security Council members have the power to veto. No matter what resolution and contracts put on the table, they can say nah, they veto it, take it off the table. Just one of them can veto what the other fifteen Security Council members say. Right, so you got the five Security Council members and then you got ten non-permanent Security Council members, right? So if fifteen of them get together, all it takes is one state out of the five Security Council members say they veto. Even fourteen said yes, one can say no, that's ridiculous. That's not democracy, you know, that is colonialism. That's a monarchy power, right? Why am I talking about this? Keep in mind, what am I doing? I'm talking contracts. I'm talking, what is the obligation of Moors? So if we're talking about we want our sovereignty and independence, that comes with a lot of responsibility and obligations. What are the terms and conditions of these treaties? And these treaties said we had to set forth reforms in Morocco. I'm trying to tell the Moors right now, stop talking about speeding tickets and traffic stops and the IRS. You got bigger things to worry about. You gotta turn into an organized dual society to enforce the obligations of these treaties. Moors keep talking about enforce treaties, guess what? These treaties are enforceable on you too. You have obligations as well, Moors. You gotta maintain the terms and conditions of the treaty. And what does the treaty say? Okay, let's get back in. The treaty say, you're responsible for the police. What's the police? Military. Cause right now the world is spiraling out of control with military arms. Right, I saw on TV the other day, even the local, uh, so-called police, right? Of the county police, they got robot dogs walking in the houses now. Serving search warrants and arrest warrants, robot dogs with a camera and a weapon on it. Robots. Right now China's selling around the world robots that look like the Terminator. They already got drones, everybody knows about the drones, unmanned ships. Now they got, they're building Terminators, they're escalating war. So what's the Moors' responsibility? We're supposed to be overseeing the diplomatic body. Let's learn about that. Okay, Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. So who's the Sultan now? Now the Sultan stepped down from the office, who stepped into the office? Remember I said, the king is dead, long live the king. Who stepped into the Sultan's office? The diplomatic body did, right? The Moors asleep. So the diplomatic body at Tangier took over, the League of Nations took over, the United Nations Charter members took over. The five Security Council members are acting like a Sultan. They stepped into the office and guess who has the most power out of the five Security Council members? United States International Organization. Why? Because they're the last signatory power to our treaties. They're overseeing the protectorate of Moors that have been asleep for decades. Right? So they got more power even than the other four Security Council members because they're the protectorate according to the International Court of Justice. In nineteen fifty-two, France versus United States of America, the ICJ judges told the United States they can hold on to a limited jurisdiction, a civil criminal jurisdiction, including legislation in Morocco. And if that's the case, they oversee the empire as well. Because they're enforcing Article one twenty-three of the Act of Al-Dusar on the whole planet. The United States of America oversees all treaties, all conventions and all arrangements in the empire of Morocco. But it's limited, why? Because they're not Moors. This is why they was challenging France in the France versus United States of America, they said, you're not Moors. The United States of America knows they're not Moors. But they have now been awarded, awarded, a judgment to allow them to hold on to the pen temporarily. So whose responsibility was it to oversee the police? See, Moors keep talking about, we gonna collect taxes, we gonna collect taxes. You better worry about what Article one and two talks about first. Before you get to economic liberty without any inequality, here's the problem right here. This is your responsibility, Moors. Think about the correlation to the charter now, we're talking Pacific Settlement of disputes and correlation to controlling this ornament of planet Earth. That's your responsibility, Moors. It's not just to get rich, you're already rich, you was born rich, you just didn't know it. But what's your true obligation? You gotta govern the cares of the world. Not just where you domicile, it's a ripple effect. When they say the rise of the Moors, that's the tide rising all ships, not just one ship. Let's get back in. Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. Why is that sentence important? Cause the police, if they're under the Sultan and it's the Moors' job to be the successor to step into the role of governing. That means now the Moors states become the Sultan, right? Our constitutions and treaties, the treaty itself is the words of the Sultan. The Sultan's office, not the personality, not the individual. His office words wrote this and the office words still are enforced. But it's the Moors' obligation to come in and enforce said terms and conditions. Contract law. So if in fact, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan, that means, that means that all police, which is the Security Council, are what? Under the sovereignty of the Moors states, cause we're the successors. Under consanguinity as well as under treaty rights. So when I tell the Moors, it was our obligation to oversee the diplomatic body, it's because the diplomatic body responsible for organizing themselves to stop the scourge of war, it is the Moors' obligation to oversee it. I'll prove that, let's keep reading, start from the top. Article two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan, which is now they come to the, uh, under the sovereignty of Moors states. It shall be recruited by the Mahzin from the Moors Mohammed. Now let me show the Moors how the French, Frank, France spells the word Mahzin, right? That way Moors know. France spells it with a M-A-K-H-Z-N, right? Mahzin, Mahzin, right? Mahzin. Okay? It shall be recruited by the Mahzin from the Moors Mohammedis. This is what Obama was trying to point out, Mohammeds are who? Moroccans, the Moors is Moroccan. Commanded by the Moors kids, right? Moroccan kids and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce, right? The first two articles automatically tell you who has the power of these one hundred and twenty-three articles. Who's dominant in the contract? The Sultan and the Moors. Sultan stepped down, who's supposed to step up? Moors, successor, to be the dominant. Everyone else is subordinate according to the contract, the terms and conditions, but the parties must be known. You can't be Moors American and enforce treaties cause Moors American is not located anywhere in the treaty. Neither is the word black. Neither is the word negro or color or the N-word is not located anywhere in here either. Neither is Pan-African. These words don't exist in the treaty. People have to learn contract law. If you can't find your identity in the contract, then you can't enforce it. And oh, by the way, it don't say Indian either. That must be understood. Okay, Article three, let's keep reading. So the Moors can understand what your obligation is to help with the cares of the world. To bring it back to the rock for salvation, while you're helping yourself, you have to help others. All tides must rise, the rise of the Moors is to rise all Moors on planet Earth. Help with fallen humanity of all the nationals, seven billion people on planet Earth. Now I know the Moors say, why are you projecting so far out? Jay, why, why are you projecting so far out? I'm not projecting far out. This treaty was written in nineteen oh six, we're behind schedule. I'm not projecting, I'm going back San Kofa and trying to bring it to the present. We've lost over a hundred years of time. We've lost tempo, this was a chess game, we've lost tempo, now we gotta play ketchup. These are obligations that we're supposed to be doing since nineteen oh six. Okay, good brother, Article three.
In order to aid the Sultan in the organization of this police, Spanish officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors and French officers as non-commissioned officers as instructors shall be placed at his disposal by their respective governments, which shall submit their designation to the approval of His Sharifian Majesty. A contract drawn between the Mahzin and these in conformity to the regulation provided by Article four shall determine the conditions of their engagement and fix their pay, which must not be less than double of the pay corresponding to the rank of each officer or non-commissioned officer. In addition, they will be allowed living expenses varying according to their residencies. Proper lodgings will be placed at their disposal by the Mahzin, which will likewise supply them with their horses and the necessary fodder. The government having jurisdiction over the instructors reserve the right to recall them and replace them by others. Accepted and engaged under the same conditions.
Alright, let's take it from the top, here's the Moors' obligations. You're dealing with the police, who are the police? The Security Council. That's what France said in the Treaty of Fès nineteen twelve. France was what? They were responsible for what? Security. Now it starts from France to now five Security Council members, right? Because the Moors, what? Acquiesced and allowed France to step in and do the job the Moors wasn't doing. Article three, in order to aid the Sultan in the organization of this police, Spanish officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors and French officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors shall be placed at his disposal by their respective governments. You see what's happening here? You see how France ended up signing the Treaty of Fès of nineteen twelve? You see how France's name is mentioned in here? France and Spain? You see how the Sultan is depending on France and Spain in Article three already, it's talking about parties. Who was the Sultan depending on? France and Spain. Right, so then France turns around and signs a bilateral treaty with the Sultan nineteen twelve. I wonder why? It's because he had already mentioned France, France in here in nineteen oh six. The Sultan trusted France. This is a treaty, the parties must be known. So he called France back again in nineteen twelve, said, okay, the Moors asleep, no one's enforcing the treaty, bring in France. France should get the job done, why? Cause France has been dealing with international law for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years. That must be understood. Go back to the Treaty of seventeen ninety-eight when France came in to help the United States of America to defeat the British. Who commissioned for France to come in and help the United States of America defeat the British? The Sultan. So that history goes way back, all the way back to sixteen thirty-one treaty between Franco-Morocco, sixteen thirty-one. Anyway, let's move on. So who's under disposal? Everybody's under disposal of the Sultan and the Moors Empire. Everybody is disposable if they're not doing their job. Which shall submit their designation to the approval of His Sharifian Majesty. That's including France. The United States of America. A contract, listen. A contract drawn between the Mahzin and these instructors. So the government, Moors government is supposed to sign a contract with France, Spain and any other signatory power that's dealing with now, the Mahzin overseeing all signatory powers dealing with police. Who's overseeing? The Mahzin and the Sultan. Let's read it again, a contract drawn up between the Mahzin and these instructors. In conformity to the regulation provided by Article four shall determine the conditions of their engagements and fix their pay, which must not be less than double of the pay corresponding to the rank of each officer and non-commissioned officer. Who's supposed to be paying? The police. Moors. The Moors government is supposed to be paying the police. In addition, they will be allowed living expenses varying according to their residence. Proper lodging will be placed at their disposal by the Mahzin, which will likewise supply them with their horses and the necessary fodder. See, the Moors government supplying everybody what they need. Listen up. The government having jurisdiction over the instructors reserve the right to recall them and replace them by others. Accepted and engaged under the same conditions. The Moors have the right to do what? Recall and replace the police. Who right now is acting at the Security Council? The five Security Council members are the security, they're the police. And according to your Moors treaty, you have the power to recall them and replace them. Why should this be important to Moors? Why should this be important to all states on planet Earth? One hundred and ninety-three member states plus non-member states. Cause everybody on planet Earth is having problems with the five Security Council members. Why? Because they control the veto. And guess who controls the so-called permanent Security Council members? Moors according to what? Treaty. This is why I try to tell the Moors, stop worrying about speeding tickets and traffic stops in the IRS. All that was satisfied. All that will satisfy itself when you have Moroccan law, you enact Moroccan law that stops all that. It, that will stop on its own. You got way more important things based upon allegations. You gotta set forth standards or reforms to deal with overseeing the police. You think the police were just your county police? No. It's the military of planet Earth. And you're supposed to oversee the five Security Council members that are now the new diplomatic body at Tangier is now in New York, Manhattan, New York, and Manhattan, New York is located where? In Morocco. And who's supposed to be overseeing it according to the treaty? The Moors. Let's continue reading. It mentioned, let's go back up. Says something about Article four, right? It says now, you, you need to go and look at Article four. Okay, let's check out Article four, Moors. Good brother.
Article four. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act of the Conference shall give their service to the organization of the body of the Sharifian police.
Stop. The Security Council's supposed to do what? Play off their allegiance to who? The Mahzen, the Moors government. Read that sentence again, good brother.
Article four. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act of the Conference shall give their service to the organization of the body of the Sharifian police.
Mm-hmm, continue.
They shall assure instruction and discipline in the conformity with the regulations to be drawn up in respect thereto. They shall also see that the men enlisted are fit for military service. In general, in a general way, they will supervise the administration of the soldiers and superintendent the payment of their salary, which shall be affected by the amen. Assisted by the accounting officer instructor. They shall extend to the Moors authorities invested with the command of these bodies their technical aid in the exercise of the said command. The regulations to assure their recruitment, discipline, instruction, and administration of the bodies of police shall be established by the mutual agreement between the Sharifian Ministry Minister of War or his delegate, the inspector provided by the Article seven and the highest ranking French Spanish instructors. The reg- the regulations shall be submit submitted to the diplomatic body at Tangier, which will formulate its opinion within a month's time. After the period of the regulations shall be enforced.
Alright, thank you, brother. Let's go back up. Why are they talking about Article four? Okay. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act. See, Moors gotta learn this word, ratification, depository, and promulgation. This is international law. These are obligations and instructions that even the Moors have to follow, okay? From the top. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act of the Conference shall give their service to the organization of the body of Sharifian police. They shall assure instruction and discipline in conformity with the regulation. What is regulation? Any contract drawn up, right? Legislation to be drawn up and respect thereto. They shall also see that the men enlisted are fit for military service. You see that? So the police is what? Military. United Nations oversees what? The military. Let's go back to the chart. We'll come back. So under Chapter six, Pacific-Southern Disputes, what is this ultimately oversees? They oversee what? Military forms, right? Okay, Moors, so what does the Security Council oversee? Alright, so let's go to Article twenty-six. Article twenty-six of Charter United Nations, in order to promote the establishment and maintenance of international peace and security with the least diversion of armaments of the world's human and economic resources, the security, the security. Okay, the Security Council shall be responsible for formulating with the assistance of the Military Staff Commitment Committee referred to in Article forty-seven, plans to be submitted to the members of the United Nations for the establishment of a system to regulation of armaments. So the Security Council, there is Security Council, right? The Security Council. Security Council is responsible for military, right? So going back to your treaty. Nineteen oh six. The police oversee the military. Right now, the Security Council overseeing the military. Who's supposed to oversee the military services? The Moors. Because now the Security Council's supposed to pledge their allegiance to the Moors government, but we've been sleeping. And they now maintaining belligerence on planet Earth with their veto power. So Moors have to come in, do what? Set forth reforms because the veto must go. We'll talk about that another day, right? So let's continue. In general, right? In a general way, they shall supervise the administration of the soldiers and superintend the payment of their salary. That's what the Security Council does right now in the United Nations. UN peacekeepers bring all the militaries of the world together. Right? And they oversee that military, the five Security Council members along with the other ten non-permanent Security Council members. Right? But who was supposed to be supervising them? The Moors. Okay, let's take from the top right here. In general way, they shall supervise the administration of the soldiers and superintend the payment of their salary, which shall be affected by the amen assisted by the accounting officer instructor. They shall extend to the Moors authorities invested with the command of these bodies their technical aid in the exercise of the said command. Let's read again, highlight there. They shall extend to the Moors authorities invested with the command of these bodies their technical aid in the exercise of the said command. Let's read it again. They shall, who's the they? Security Council. The diplomatic body who's overseeing security? Right? Who's the they? Diplomatic body and whoever the Security Council is. They shall extend to the Moors authorities invested with the command of these bodies their technical aid in the exercise of said command. Oh, wait a minute. Who's the Moors authorities? Okay. Who are the Moors authorities? Well, France says what? Moroccans. That's who the Moors are, Moroccans, not Moors Americans. The parties must be known. Certainly not Pan-Africans or black men or Indian or African-American color, negro. None of the above, or the N-word. N-words don't run nothing. Only Moroccans can enforce contracts. Let's continue. The regulations to assure the rec- recruit discipline, instruction, and administration of the bodies of police. Who talked about administration? Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve, Article one. What was the first word in the six principles that France were responsible for, the Sultan set forth in inauguration? First word was what? Administration. Right? Then judicial. It said, administration, judicial. Right? Administration, judicial. That's what you're looking at right here. Here's the administration. Overseeing what? The diplomatic bodies. Administration is what? Organized dual societies setting forth reforms. Start from the top. The regulations to assure the recruit discipline. We have to hand out discipline. Instruction and administration of the bodies of police. Let's read it again. The regulations to assure, we need Moroccan law, that's regulation. To assure the recruit discipline, instruction, and administration of the bodies of police shall be established by mutual agreement between the Sharifian Minister of War or his delegate. The inspector provided by Article seven, well, let's pause right here. Who's the inspector? We gonna learn about that. Just a moment, we gonna keep going. Inspector, give you a clue. The Inspector General. Okay? But guess who the Inspector General is now? The Secretary General of the United Nations. But in the Act of Osters, it says inspector. We gonna learn about that. So the inspector provided by Article seven and the highest ranking French and Spanish instructors. The regulations shall be submitted to the diplomatic body, right? Meaning the law that the Mahzen put together in mutual agreement with the diplomatic body of Tangier, which will formulate its opinion within a month's time. After that period, the regulations shall be enforced. So the Mahzen, the Moors work with the diplomatic body to put together regulations. That way the Moors can do what? Governing over what? The Security Council. The police and the military. Section five, good brother.
Article five, the total strength of the police shall not be more than twenty-five hundred men nor less than two thousand. It shall be distributed according to the importance of the ports in groups varying between a hundred and fifty and six hundred men. The number of Spanish and French officers shall be between sixteen and twenty. Of Spanish and French non-commissioned officers between thirty and forty.
Okay, so you see, Moors are overseeing French and Spanish officers to do all the training, because France was what? The Security Council in nineteen twelve. Article six.
The funds necessary to maintain and pay soldiers and officers and non-commissioned officers instructors shall be advanced by the state bank to the Sharifian treasury within the limits of the annual budget assigned to the police, which shall not exceed two million and a half vasetas for any effective strength of two thousand five hundred men.
Continue, Article seven.
During the same period of the five years, a general inspection shall be made into the working of the police. Such inspections shall be trusted by the Sharifian Majesty to the superior officer of the Swiss Army who will, who will be submitted to his approval by the Swiss federal government. This officer will be styled Inspector General and reside in Tangier. He shall inspect at least once a year the, the different bodies of the police. And after such inspection, he shall draw up a report which he will address with the Mahzen.
To the Mahzen.
Which he will address to the Mahzen. In addition to such regular reports, he will, if he regards it as necessary, draw up special reports with reference to the working of the police. Without directly intervening either in the command or instruction, the Inspector General will ascertain the results obtained by the Sharifian police as regards the maintenance of order and security in places where this police shall have been established.
Alright, thank you, good brother. That's Article seven. Let's go back and recap. This is important. During the same period of five years, a general inspection shall be made into the working of the police. So somebody's supposed to be inspecting the police. Overseeing the five Security Council members. Who's overseeing them right now? Nobody. But they're acting like they have what? Amnesia. Like they suffer from cognitive dissonance as if they don't realize these char- these, these treaties exist as a contract. They know that the Moors have jurisdiction over the five Security Council members. They know this because of this treaty. Listen. Article seven, during the same period of five years of general inspection shall be made into the working of the police, the Security Council. Someone's gotta inspect them. Who's supposed to be inspecting them? We gonna learn about that. Such inspections shall be entrusted by his Sharifian Majesty to a superior officer of the Swiss Army, who will be submitted to his approval by the Swiss federal government. So the Sultan's now entrusting the Swiss to oversee this, right? Because Switzerland acts as what? A neutral state. Everybody knows Switzerland is a neutral state, right? This officer will be styled Inspector General and reside at Tangier. Now, keep in mind this word Inspector General. See the hyphen? Inspector hyphen general. Okay, we gonna come back to that. He, who's he? Inspector General, who's really the Security Secretary General of the United Nations now. Okay, listen. He shall inspect at least once a year the different bodies of the police. And after such inspection, he shall draw up a report which he will address to the Mahzen. He reports to the Moors government. Right? So who right now is the Secretary General of the United Nations? It's the good brother, and I do mean good brother, Antonio Gutiérrez. He's the Secretary General of the United Nations. According to the charter, he's the Inspector General. His title, his status has changed, just his title. But his functions remain the same. He oversees the Security Council. He briefs them. Right? He can summon them. If an emergency's going on on planet Earth, the Secretary General can summon the Security Council to come together and discuss some type of dispute that's going on on planet Earth. Let's read real quick. What is his main function? Okay, here, brother.
Secretary General of the United Nations. The Secretary General of the United Nations, UNSG or SG, is the Chief Administrative Officer of the United Nations and head of the United Nations Secretariat. One of the six principal organs of the United Nations. The role of the Secretary General and of the Secretariat is laid out by Chapter fifteen, Articles ninety-seven to a hundred and one.
Alright, so that's general information, right? General. Right? So the Secretary General, Antonio Gutiérrez, right? Antonio Gutiérrez. Good brother. He's always at the United Nations giving proclamations, speeches about fallen humanity. He's always talking about women and girls, to uplift women and girls to stop the scourge of war. Because he's the inspector, his job is to take a look at the social reforms of planet Earth. And have the Security Council to look into the mediation, arbitration, and judicial settlement based upon any type of atrocities or human rights violations on planet Earth. That's his job. But his words fall on deaf ears, right? Deaf ears of the United Nations Charter. Security Council members, why? Because the main five Security Council members are the main ones keeping up belligerence on planet Earth. The United States is in a perpetual war. Russia now is in wars. China's in wars, right? They keeping up this belligerence on planet Earth. France oversees NATO, the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, right? NATO is all the European states came together to put together what? A military machine. Right? That's all NATO is, one big military army. That way, when the United Nations Charter, Security Council members don't allow the UN peacekeepers to deal with something, guess who deals with it? NATO. Right? So Antonio Gutiérrez is supposed to report into who? The Moors. According to the treaty. Go back to the treaty. He's supposed to address to the Mahzen. Right? He's supposed to address the Mahzen. Right now, he's not addressing the Mahzen of Moors, he's addressing who? The General Assembly members of the United Nations, and he's addressing the Security Council of the United Nations. But he's not addressing according to the treaty, which is an obligation, because treaty's supreme law of the land is what you call absolute law. It's substantive law, is what you call absolute immunity. The treaties are immune from what? Discretion. Treaties are written in what's called a strict sense. Moors can come in and enforce the treaty and say, no. The Inspector General, i.e. the Secretary General, is supposed to report to Moors. Let me also prove this to you. Let's go to the nineteen twenty. League of Nations. Here's the covenant of the League of Nations, right? It's one hundred and seventeen articles of nineteen twenty to nineteen forty-six. This took the place of the diplomatic body of Tangier. Right? So the League of Nations came up second. Right? It's the second rendition of the diplomatic body of Tangier. Then the League of Nations dissolved itself and created the United Nations. But let's look into the United Nations. Oh, should I say the League of Nations? Just a moment. Let's look up the word secretary. Secretary General, Article six.
Permanent secretariats shall be established as the seat of the League. The secretariat shall comprise of the Secretary General and such secretaries and staff may be required. The first Secretary General shall be the person named in annex, in the annex. Thereafter, the Secretary General shall be appointed by the council with the approval of the majority of the assembly. The secretaries and the staff of the secretariat shall be appointed by by the Secretary General with the approval of the Council. The Secretary General shall act in capacity at all meetings of the Assembly and of the Council. The expenses of the secretariat shall be borne by the members of the League in accordance with the apportionment of the, of the expenses of the International Bureau of the Universal Postal Union.
All right, so as you can see, Moors. Secretary General was mentioned in the League of Nations. But the League of Nations was formed by who? France. France brought the League of Nations back to where? Paris, France. That's where it was established and founded, because France was controlling the pen. So now they changed whose title. The Inspector General is now who? Secretary General. So then there's all the League of Nations, and they established the United Nations, and now all of a sudden now, you got who? You got this, good brother. Antonio Gutiérrez, right? Gutiérrez. And now he's the Secretary General of the United Nations. And according to our treaties, he's supposed to be addressing the Mozen. See how this is working? Should I tell Moors, "Stop worrying about speeding tickets and traffic stops in the IRS"? No, you better be worried about your true obligations of these treaties. Because chapter one is about controlling the military of the planet to stop what? The scourge of war. In addition to such regular reports, he will, if he regards it as necessary, draw up a special report. This is what this, what Antonio Gutiérrez does every year. He draws up these special reports. He talks to the General Assembly. He talks to Security Council. All year round. Start from the top. In addition to such regular reports, he will, if he regards it as necessary, draw up a special report with reference to the working of the police without directly intervening either in command or the instruction. The Inspector General, i.e. the Secretary General of the United Nations, will ascertain the results obtained by the Sharifian police as regards the maintenance of order. Supposed to be the Sharifian police doing this. Security in the places where this police shall have been established. This goes back to Article two. It's supposed to be the Moors controlling the police. And the Moors turn around and being the police themselves. Article eight, good brother.
A copy of the reports and communications made to the Mozen by the Inspector General with a reference to his mission shall at the time, shall at the same time be transmitted to the dean of, of diplomatic body at Tangier. In order that the diplomatic body be enabled to satisfy itself that the Sharifian police acts in conformity to the decisions taken by the Conference. And to see whether it guarantees effectively and in conformity with the treaties. The security of the person and property of the foreign citizens, subjects, proteges or proteges, as well as the commercial transactions.
Mm-hmm. Okay, what have we read thus far? Okay, Article eight. A copy of the reports and communications made to the Mozen. Who's the Mozen? Moors government. By the Inspector General, i.e. the Secretary General of the United Nations, with reference to his mission, shall at the same time be transmitted to the dean of the diplomatic body at Tangier. In order that the diplomatic body be enabled to satisfy itself that the Sharifian police acts in conformity to the decisions taken by the Conference. And to see whether it guarantees effectively and in conformity with the treaties. To the diplomatic body, the Secretary General, the Security Council, the General Assembly, all supposed to maintain conformity to what? To the treaties. So when the Moors come to the United Nations, when the Moors go to the ICJ, if the Moors have to go to the ICC, what do we bring with us? To conformly what? Our treaties. See how powerful your treaties are, Moors? This is why I try to tell y'all. The Act of Obsters of nineteen oh six is the most powerful treaty ever written in Moors history. Stop worrying about being rich, Moors. Y'all already rich. You gotta deal with what's called organized chaos. That's what we gotta do. We gotta deal with the cares of the world. And allow the Secretary General to report to us the problems he's having with the five so-called permanent Security Council members. Give good brother Antonio an obligation, an opportunity, I should say. This good brother, an opportunity to do his job. He's been tasked with the obligation to ensure the uplifting of fallen humanity. And who's supposed to be helping him? Moors. I'm not finished. Let's keep going. So conformity of the treaties, the security of person and property of foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges, as well as that of commercial transactions, right? So the Moors government, along with the Secretary General of the United Nations, is supposed to be enforcing treaties on everybody on planet Earth. To maintain the security of person. What's person? States of persons? Corporations of persons? Right? Human beings of persons? Right? Persons is a generic word. And property of the foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges, as well as that of commercial transactions. We're supposed to be overseeing all that. It's a lot of responsibility. Article nine, good brother.
In the case of complaints filed by a diplomatic body by a legation concerned, the diplomatic body may, upon notice given the representative of the Sultan, direct the Inspector General to investigate and report for all available purposes in the matter of such complaint.
You see what the Moors responsible for? Let's read again. In the case of complaints. What's complaints?
Disputes.
Disputes. Pacific settlement disputes. Complaints, mediation, arbitration, judicial settlement. Okay. Article nine. In the case of complaints filed with the diplomatic body. Who's the diplomatic body? Security Council, General Assembly, right? Diplomatic body may, upon notice, given to the representatives of the Sultan. Who's the representative of the Sultan? Moors. The Mozen. Direct the Inspector General to investigate. So the Sultan and the Mozen direct the Inspector General, the Secretary General to investigate and report for all available purposes in the matter of such complaints. Who's he reporting it to? Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan Moors. What type of Moors? Competent Moroccan Moors of a Moors state government who have full powers filed in good and due form. We're supposed to do what? What, what are we supposed to do? Help this good brother in the year twenty twenty-three. He's tired of begging. I listened to this man. He gets speech after speech, report after report, and it falls on deaf ears of the United Nations so-called permanent Security Council. Because they don't have to listen to him, because they all got the veto. But according to our Moors treaties, we can help this good brother to do his job, because it's supposed to be reported to us. And then we're supposed to come in and do what? And act reforms to do what? Recall, replace, remove anybody that's been a belligerent in the Security Council. That's what our treaty said. Let's continue. Article ten.
The Inspector General shall receive an annual salary of twenty-five thousand francs. In addition, he will be allowed six thousand francs for the expenses of his tours. The Mozen will place at his disposal a suitable residence and will look after the maintenance of his horses.
So the Moors supposed to take care of the Secretary General? Because he's taking care of who? Us. Article eleven.
The material conditions of his engagement and of the establishment as provided by Article ten shall be the subj- the subject of a contract drawn up between him and the Mozen. A copy of this, of this contract shall be communicated to the diplomatic body.
You see? Article eleven. The material conditions of his engagement. Whose engagement? Secretary General of the United Nations. Start from the top. Article eleven. The material conditions of his engagement and of his establishment as provided by Article ten shall be the subject of a contract drawn up between him and the Mozen. A copy of this contract shall be communicated to the diplomatic body. You know what this is doing? This is empowering the Secretary General. Because he got a contract with who? The Moors. And the Moors are who in the contract? The dominant. So we were supposed to be working side by side with his office. He has the office of Secretary General at this time. We're supposed to have a contract with him, bilateral contract, so that he has the freedom and the liberty to deal with the so-called permanent Security Councilmen. That's how he gets liberation from his occupation. Because right now, all his words are falling on deaf ears. That's true. Why? Because the Moors acquiesced. We're not here to help him. He needs help. The world needs help. He's trying to help the world to stop the belligerents. And who he have the biggest problems with? The five Security Council members. Article twelve, last article.
Article twelve. The staff instructors of the Sharifian police, officers and non-commissioned officers, shall be Spanish at Tatouan, mixed at Tangier, Spanish at Narachi, French at Babat, mixed at Casablanca, and French in the other three ports.
Okay, that's the end of the reading. Article one. Okay? Or should I say, chapter one? So chapter one. About a declaration relative to the organization of the police. That's our first responsibility, Moors. After we've done what first, technically? After we ratified, pardoned, and promulgated our constitution, acceded to the treaty, that way we can enforce the treaty, because we become a party to the treaty. We gotta get right into rule one. Controlling the police. What's the first police we deal with? We gotta police ourselves first. That's where it starts. It's Islam. I self-law and master. You gotta be the law. You gotta police yourself. Then you gotta deal with the United States of America. Well, how do you deal with the United States of America? That's easy. Your counsel court. When counsel court seems like it's, it hasn't prevailed, you take them to what? You ask the provisions of what? The Charter. Nineteen forty-five. You go down to the Charter. And you start to enforce chapter six, Pacific Settlement of Disputes. By utilizing mediation, arbitration, judicial settlement through the ICJ. So when we're talking nearsighted and farsighted. First, we have to maintain integrity domains right here at home, our homeland. We gotta start here first. The whole world waiting on Moors to deal with the belligerent war machine con- commonly known as the United States International Organization. That's the biggest bully on planet Earth. Who just so happens to sit on the so-called permanent Security Council, and which is not permanent. You know why they say it's permanent? Because it says it in the Charter. But the Charter's a contract. And that contract is what? Subordinate to treaties. So who oversees the treaties? Moors, the Mozen, the Moors state governments. And we got every right under Article one twenty-three, right, as I start to close out. Article one twenty-three. Right? Article one twenty-three of the Act of Obsters. And last, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements of the secretary powers with Morocco remain enforced. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail. What shall prevail? Moroccan law. That's what shall prevail. The Act of Obsters, all one hundred twenty-three articles. What else shall prevail? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. What else shall prevail? All the bilateral treaties that Morocco has with all the other secretary powers. What else shall prevail? Our obligation to govern the Security Council. Because the Security Council's a part of the diplomatic body at Tangier. The Security Council is what Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve with France overseeing security. The diplomatic body is the League of Nations that's now converted into the United Nations. And we were supposed to oversee all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements in Morocco. So as I start to close out, we'll keep talking about the, uh, Pacific Settlement disputes. We're gonna stay on this post for a little while. It's very important, um, chapter in the, uh, Charter of the United Nations, right? But let's sum it up by saying this. So far, we got the basic understanding of the Pacific Settlement of this. It's about the prior consent to recognize the compulsory jurisdiction of the ICJ Court. That's what it's ultimately about. What our treaty say, we first use what? Counsel court. But when counsel court allegedly does not prevail, we take it to the ICJ in order to maintain peace and security, right? But the Moors have to understand the basic fundamentals of contract law. Because that's what this is all about. The Charter is about contract law. It's just, it's about contract law. The Charter already understands and recognizes itself being subordinate to treaties. Right? So let's talk about this one last time. The four elements to a contract. Number one, who are the parties of the contract? Number two, who is dominant and subordinate in the contract? Number three, what are the terms and conditions of said contract? And number four, where and how do you enforce the contract? That must be understood. We'll keep on with this subject matter, all right? I am with that. Islam.